I do have four clocks, so I'm going to call the town council meeting March tenth, twenty twenty-five order. And the first order of business would be the indication.
Blessings. Heavenly Father, as we gather together this evening, we just ask for your many blessings, Lord, and we please ask that you be with us. Times are challenging and hard for so many people, but we hope and pray for better days in the coming weeks and months ahead. And Father, as always, we just ask for your guidance in our decision-making for our wonderful town. In all these things, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of the Lord, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay. Everyone should have received a copy of last month's minutes. Any comments, corrections?
I move to approve the February tenth, twenty twenty-five minutes as presented.
One second. Motion and second further discussion. Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. And we'll go ahead and move to the treasurer's report. Sharon.
Well, I'm just reading. We'll get back to our meeting. So, in your packet this time, we have the financial statements through February. And the report looks a little different because we have upgraded the system. Now we have our conferences actually in there, which are, which show the balances of the purchase orders that we had in the system now. So, it kind of is a little different, but I think it gives us a clearer picture of where we are in here today. The next thing is, I'm going to introduce is the budget ordinance for this evening. And we're going to be holding a public hearing next, I mean, in April fourteenth for the budget for it to be adopted. And then we'll have a workshop scheduled for next Tuesday. And what your ordinance does say that we're proposing to keep the property actually same as last year at the point of order. So, if anyone has any questions for me?
How's the new software?
Yeah.
It's going good.
Good.
Yeah, and we're, we're still learning.
Sure.
But we've had, we've had many training classes and we still have more coming.
Great.
So, but it'll be nice when we're familiar and everything's in the system and it's a push of luck.
Yeah, awesome.
But we're getting there.
Are they online training classes or does somebody come here and?
They're online.
Oh, okay.
It's kind of like virtual, you know, like a Zoom or Teams meeting.
Like a LinkedIn learning kind of thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's a live person on the other side, so you can ask a question.
Oh, even better.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's really good.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
If only it's not taking you just to dance.
Crazy, isn't it?
Okay. Anything else? Okay, thank you. And moving on to planning department, Mike Bale.
Thank you, sir. So, we did not have a hunting zone meeting in February. We are scheduled to have one this month over seventeen. And we'll be having a public hearing for ordinance number two-two-seven, which is the draft letter count twenty-twenty-five comprehensive plan. And hunting and zoning, we will be making recommendation to town council to proceed.
Okay. Comments, questions for Mike?
Mike, is that an open public hearing for, for the public to ask questions or is that just?
Yes.
No, yes.
Okay, okay, okay.
Thank you.
Did we send that out to the hunting zone entity? You don't need me.
I have not done that. I should do that, Heather, tomorrow afternoon.
No worries. I just want to make sure I didn't miss.
The package is ready, so if you want one, we'll go. I feel like I don't have ready as the staff report.
That's all good. No, thank you, Mike.
Anything else from Mike? Thank you.
Thank you.
And a couple of Brazil's not here, but she received a copy of her report.
Michelle, did you leave my packet down in the?
Oh, in your box.
Is it my box? Thank you. I was going to grab it and it didn't look like it was in there.
Just looking at her report, one hundred and twenty-four crime preventions. That's just going around, making sure things are good. Seventy-six vehicle stops. That's always good to see, so. She's out there and working it, so they're out there and working it, so certainly appreciate it, so. Any other comments from the police report?
I, I saw her walking one day out on the outside. I was like, do you need a ride?
I'm sorry.
I was seeing that they're controlling one side and then car.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to administrator's report. Michelle.
Okay, the first item is request for outdoor seating for four-one-six-five-four and four-one-six-five-six Fenwick Street, which is the former David Flowers Building, and Mr. Jim Hiles is the new owner of the building and he's with us today. He has requested outdoor seating over two parking spaces that are in front of the building. He has filed for, submitted a building permit application to retrofit, retrofit the two vacant units into restaurants. And the permits are currently under review. The outdoor seating would allow for additional seating capacity needed for the restaurant to use as well as to add vibrancy to the Fenwick Street district. A building permit has been submitted for the construction of a two-hundred-and-seventy-three square foot composite deck with skirting. And it would be constructed over the two parking spaces to ensure the seating area is level with the sidewalk. A thirty-six inch tall aluminum rail system would surround the seating area on three sides for safety, and there's a drawing in your packet. Whenever we were reviewing the application, we noted that the property lines don't line up exactly with the, the building itself. And so we, staff has been working hard on looking at different alternatives for parking on Fenwick Street and improvements, as well as traffic calming for Fenwick Street itself. And so what we're proposing is restriping, if this is approved, restriping the parking. And it will actually pick up two additional spaces in front of the two alleys that are not being used on a daily basis. And it will get rid of the one in front of the, the parking space in front of the old social building, so that cars aren't pulling in directly into the, the end of the sidewalk seating. And we have in the budget to do a larger brick bump out that will kind of narrow the road there to help also slow traffic down, also help with pedestrian crossings, make it safer. And then if anyone ever goes into the, the old social that wants outdoor seating, it would already be there, so it's not going to be taking any parking away. So, we would still have the same amount of parking spaces once we do the restriping as we have today. Additionally, we're, we're doing a lot of things to try to show the public where to park. A lot of people aren't familiar that L-Town Alley is now done and how easy it is, the adding the nice sidewalks to get to Fenwick Street. So, it's just pretty, almost the same business to park them on the, the dragging side of Fenwick Street and walk to one of the businesses on the other side. It's to park behind them and walk down the sidewalk. So, a lot of it is just getting information out there. There's always spaces that the brick parking lot is rarely full, especially during the week. So, that way that we make the parking, those two spaces line up exactly with the property lines. And there was a drawing in your packet. And then, like I said, we're also looking at ways to slow down traffic as a whole. There's been a couple accidents there this week of just, just people pulling out of the parking space the last month. People pulling out of the parking spaces and people coming too fast up that hill. So, I think it'll help with everything. I also included in your packet the original guidelines for outdoor seating that we adopted. And the plan that is submitted does meet those guidelines. As I said, Mr. Hiles is here. If you have any questions or if you can help, if you have any additional questions.
I would add that, you know, and Jay has actually asked us to add to the budget, speed sign coming up that road, so.
I want speed cameras.
So, we remember that because of breaking, we realized.
I was going to say, it's got to be around schools, it's limited.
So, that's the only time we can do it, so.
But I did see the sheriff's department there last week giving out tickets, quite a few tickets in that area, so. Yep. Then also I noticed today in the alleyway, the old bank alleyway, Kate's actually putting up lights.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, she has a facade grant to redo the alley and.
Nice.
And she's, she's going to have seating or something in there, right?
Yeah, so she doesn't want cars coming through the alley, so she's happy to put a parking space in front of that. But it does need restripe to kind of redistribute the, the footage.
Yeah.
And then on the other side, because we have the ballers up, no cars can use that, and so we can add space there as well.
Could we add ballers on her side, just so nobody acts against her?
Yeah, I know you, you should.
Yeah, that's probably what we'll do.
Dredge strip. I mean, we can always take them down if we need to, but at least it would be.
I can probably add that to the budget. I don't know that I have the money to do it now, but we could probably still add that to the budget.
So, just to confirm, the restriping, once we do that, we'll gain a spot at the Duke's Alley, and then we'll gain one at Bank of America. So, really, we're not losing a spot this time. Okay. Okay.
With the restriping on the other one, right, because one has to be.
Yeah, with the restriping at all, it's like. Do we have a timeframe for the striping?
Um, once this is approved, I can go ahead and get that schedule, because it'll probably have to be, I don't, I don't even know what day to do, but that is not busy.
Yeah.
That's the only problem.
Yeah.
So, I'll have to work with, with the striping company and see when they could do it.
Gotcha.
Because we have contracts, so.
Right.
And will this match, Michelle, like what the Rex has and Antonet's? Kind of the same?
Correct, so similar.
Similar.
You know, I don't have those memorized. The tracks will be bottom and there's a lot of options for aluminum rail system.
To go around?
I'll, I'll look at the other ones and I'll mention, they're all kind of black.
Yeah, I believe so. And it might be nice just to keep them all relatively consistent.
They're really nice, though, for keeping people in and on the deck.
Yeah.
As, as somebody that had three kids, some of the age of three, you only have two hands.
Yeah.
So, to have that.
I'm not sure. I think it might be different. People that get those, like I currently have quotes from a couple of, I don't know, I've been using that. They've done a couple of rail systems for me, so it's something I learned recently after all of that business. So, I planned on using one of them.
I think it's, they're, yeah, they have these different companies, but they're all pretty similar. I think the white with the, the white rail and then the black pickets.
Yeah, yeah, so like I, the last one I did has, it's all powder coated aluminum and has a black, like a four-on-four with a cap.
Yeah.
And then the ones that I last did had like the steel cables, and every fourth one is a stainless steel piece. But you can do all that. I'll, I'll match the.
Be nice. Yeah, generally, yeah, that'd be awesome.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds good.
Jim, any idea when any of the businesses may be looking to open up?
Uh, so right now, we're, we got a grease trap in, we got, I got, you know, a bunch of trenches dug inside. And so I have, it's a three permit deal, so I have a permit active right now on the site and shell improvements, which includes all the interior drains. So, they should be done trenching this week, and then I'll get the drains in probably next week. And as soon as my other two permits are approved, I already have the trades lined up, the plumbing and heat pack electric. So, I mean, just, also, they start paying on their leases in June, and they're responsible for their boots. And we're, it's on a project restore grant, so they're required to be open by December thirty-first this year. So, we're working towards that. They, Boots thinks they're going to be open sooner. I'm not sure about that. It's Smash and Boons, and Smash is a going concern, so they, they know what they're doing. They got a lot of practice at this. And Boons is their first month, so they're a little. So, I'm sure it'll be probably fall, April.
Okay.
Great.
Certainly, the, the interior renovation plans are with the same, are Marshall Street.
Thank you, Mike.
Any other comments, questions?
I move to approve the proposed outdoor seating area located in front of four-one-six-five-four and four-one-six-five-six Fenwick Street, which will occupy two existing parking spaces as shown on the attached parking space delineation plan.
No second.
Further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
The next item is to award the municipal solid waste and disposal contract. The town advertised a request for bid regarding the municipal solid waste and recyclables collection and disposal contract on January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. The bid packages were due February twenty-eighth, twenty-five, following the pre-bid meeting February tenth, twenty-five. The term of this contract will be for five, a five-year period beginning July first of this year and ending June thirtieth, twenty thirty. The contractor in town hereby agree that the town shall have an option to extend this, the term of the contract for two additional two-year periods. The contractor and town officials have to meet each year prior to February first, when the contract is up for renewal, for those two-year option terms. Two bids were received, and I put in your package the comparison of the bid prices and how it would affect pricing based on our current statements and usage. The overall low bidder is WB Waste Solutions. And there was a, two different, there was the bid comparison prices, and then the larger spreadsheet, which showed actual invoices that we've received, one in January and one from August of last year, for two different time periods, so you could make sure that they were consistent pricing and what we were actually billed for. Because there's items in, in the bid prices that aren't used on a regular basis. So, we wanted to really capture exactly the uses that we actually are billed for on a consistent basis and how it affects the residents. And so you can see those in both cases, WB's pricing, new pricing was lower than Republic's. Just because there's so many line items, and some of the, you know, there were ones that were, Republic was lower and ones that WB Waste were lower, but the ones that were, had the highest impact to what we use on a regular basis, WB's, there had more that were lower. We had no issues. They were very, WB has been extremely cooperative and worked with us even on the weekends. And John is here. He, he actually gets, his phone blows up. He'll answer anytime and, and try to help us out. And I think our residents get very good service.
I agree.
Comments, questions?
Yeah, sorry, Dan. Michelle, remind me, are, were we going to resurvey folks about maybe dropping down to the one day a week or?
We, we did talk about it. So, in this bid packet, there was pricing for one, to, to go down to once a week, so we wouldn't have to be bid, but we already have the pricing.
Yeah, okay.
Um, when we surveyed the residents before, they wanted to keep the two times a week. And as you'll see during the budget process with these new prices, we're still right at or below what outside of Leonard Town people are paying for once-a-week service where we have twice-a-week service.
Okay, thank you.
The main cost is the cost to dispose of the products, not the actual pickup, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's interesting. So, is that going to go up then when we add the, like, the new neighborhoods, like the new portion of?
Well, and they'll, they'll be paying also, so I mean.
Cost per.
The rate, the rates are going up a little bit, but it's not, like I said, we, we've done a survey to see what rates are outside of town, and we're still below with the twice-a-week service.
Yeah, no, I think, I love the twice-a-week service personally, so.
Any other questions?
I move to award the current municipal solid waste and recyclables collection and disposal contract to WB Waste Solutions LLC, formerly known as Good Companies, Inc., to accept the proposed unit prices from the February twenty-twenty-five bid.
No second.
Okay, a motion and second, further discussion. Okay, hearing, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
And so we won't need to swap out bins and all that stuff? Great.
Yep.
All right, the next item is just a review of the Maryland Heritage Areas Authority Grant that we have applied for. If you're all in agreement to move forward with that, for carousel restoration. As part of the continued effort to implement the goals and actions of the Downtown Strategic Plan, the town is applying for a Maryland Heritage Area Grant in the amount of eight thousand seven hundred forty-six fifty for the planning, design, and cost estimating services for the restoration and relocation of the vintage Allen Herschel Carousel to the Leonard Town Wharf. And we got, or donated that carousel from the fire department when it came down to carnival, and we have it in storage now. We would provide a total project cost of seventeen thousand four ninety-three. Phase one of the project is planned to begin on July tenth, which includes, after July tenth, which would include finalizing the scope of work in order to solicit final cost proposals. And we would have to have matching funds for this, but we do have them available in the waterfront revitalization fund that we have. So, the total project would be for seventeen thousand four ninety-three, and that's going to get us the, the expert to come and look at all the parts that we have and what we would need to do and help us come up with an estimate for modifications that have to be made to it. It would look at the new characters that were donated, if we can use them on the, you know, the hand carved ones and see if they could fit. And then it would also use Mayhem Michael to take their plans to the next step for, so for cost estimating and to get rendering of what it would look like.
Wow, that's pretty nice.
You know, there's not really any action unless you have.
All, all we need to contribute for this one, though, Michelle, right, is just the eight thousand, the matching.
Correct, and we have that in the waterfront revitalization fund. And I will tell you that I got the new architectural plans for the food hall that were being revised last Wednesday, so I'm happy to show those to you. If you want to see those sometime.
I mean, carousel is part of it?
Um, they are, it's right at the outside of it, like it has, it's not in front of the building now. It's kind of on the end, so it doesn't block the building as well.
Okay.
Because the main view of the building is from the water.
Michelle, what happens if we don't get the grant? Not that I want to be a negative nominee, but.
We can decide to, to fund it from the waterfront.
Perfect.
Yes.
Perfect.
I'm hopeful that we will.
I'm hopeful.
Okay, the next item is just the introduction of ordinance number two-two-seven for the twenty-twenty-five comprehensive plan that Mike mentioned earlier. Janine is going to be presenting that during the public hearing. She was unable to be here today, but we're just, at this point, introducing the ordinance. Under the Maryland Code, the town is required to adopt and execute a comprehensive plan and to review such plan at least once every ten years. So, this is our cycle. It's been longer, we lasted it in twenty, two thousand and ten, right? So, it's been longer than ten years, but it's just to get us, everyone on cycle with the state. So, this year is when we're required to do it. We've been actually working on it since twenty nineteen, when we started working on the downtown plan. So, there's been a lot of people involved in the process. We will hold a public hearing on the plan at the March seventeenth meeting at four fifteen for the Planning Commission, and then they will make a recommendation. We'll hold another public hearing on April tenth before you, and you can make a decision. The state and county comments are due back tomorrow. That would be their ninety-day review period, so I haven't received anything. So, for today, we're just introducing the ordinance two-two-seven.
And Jennifer, give your names to the faculty.
The names to the quarterly update. I'm working with the Assistant Town Administrator and Freehand and Street Handle. Organization checklist, priors to approve board number terms, conflict of interest policy for ordinance that will grant grants, and updated grant letter.
Thank you. Certainly appreciate it, and things are going well, so.
That's all I have.
Okay. Anything else for Michelle?
Good job, Mike Daly, winning the dollhouse.
So, I bought five the first day, and I bought five the last day.
Okay.
Congrats.
And I brought her toys with that thing.
Aww.
I love it.
Yeah, I need to contact the guy that made it, because she's played with it so much, the light in the kitchen, all the lights actually work in this town, by the way.
Yeah, I plugged it in when I sent it.
For some reason, that's not working, so you can figure it out.
I love that little hose.
The detail wasn't there.
Okay. I'm moving on to my report. No one from LBA is here.
I have a written, just at the last minute, the, the Christie's ended up getting sick, so LBA. The Business Association is celebrating its twenty-fifth year this year, and the state of the town is April eleventh. We'll be celebrating that twenty-fifth year. We're hoping to get the, the invitations out to all businesses in Leonard Town this week. And they have the exceptional Easter egg hunt April fourth and fifth. It's a collaborative event, much like the scarecrow, scarecrow stroll. They're hoping businesses, organization, and organizations throughout St. Mary's County will join in the fun. Right now, they have thirty businesses from St. Mary's signed up to hide at least one dozen eggs on Friday and Saturday around noon. Eleven of those eggs will contain small prizes, and at least one egg will have a bigger prize, gift card or winner card of some sort. The town and LBA will be hiding the eggs as well. If any town council members would like to help stuff it or hide eggs, they would love volunteers. The biggest time they need help specifically is for the hiders on Saturday. And also save the date for the upcoming Hometown Heroes concert on June the seventh. And remind visitors, or remind, actually businesses, it should be, to upload, upload any and all events to visit LeonardTownMD.com. Just one click on, in the calendar and click to submit your event, and that does also get then added to visit St. Mary's as well. So, and add it in our newsletter and, but we need it to be added to visit Leonard Town, so that we do have those events out there to promote. And that's all.
Okay. The only other thing I've got is I was at the Maryland Mayor's Association Winter Conference over Wednesday evening, Thursday and Friday morning, so. Up in Indianapolis, of course, everything going on with the session up there is kind of crazy, so, yeah. But no, it was a good event and good seeing everybody. That's all I had, and we'll move on to council reports. Heather, events?
I attended Mall Dyer. It was freezing. It was lovely. Just kudos to everybody who volunteered. Eris was out, of course, doing a phenomenal job. Always makes me happy to see her. Question, Michelle, also for the exceptional egg hunt. They need us when? The April fifth? And that's hospice also, so that'll be either good timing or bad timing.
I think it's the day before, like the third.
It says April fourth and fifth, so that would be Friday.
Yeah.
Fifth is the house.
Saturday. When did she say where I'm hiding the eggs?
I just didn't know how that would work, like, and do people need to remember where they hide the eggs?
Somebody will find a.
It's fine. I guess I, I just want to make sure, because I can help, so it's not a problem.
It says Saturday, which would be the fifth, but there are scenes, April fourth and fifth, so let me just double check that.
Okay, I'll, I'll help. I, I don't mind.
No, they're hiding them each day, so it sounds like Saturday is the way they need to help them.
Okay.
They're hiding twelve eggs by noon Friday and twelve eggs on Saturday.
I might do the run, so I'll, I'll just run here instead.
Yeah, I'll join you. That sounds fun.
Yeah. So, yeah, but back to Mall Dyer, great, great event. I, every year I enjoy it. It's one of my favorite things that I do here, so it's a good way to kind of break up the winter as well. That's all I have, Mary. Oh, I think I have a, thank you. Oh, the picnic tables. Yeah, I'll agree. I'll let Mary talk about that since she's here, so.
I didn't tell them.
No, no, you're wrong, or two of them, yeah. No, thank, thank you, Mary.
Thank you. And Nick, community development and planning?
All right, thank you, Mayor. I don't have much to report. Still a number of projects working and permits and UNOs coming through, which is great. The only thing I was going to mention is, yeah, the hospice wall, April fifth, always a great event, so if you're interested, make sure to register for it. Hopefully, good weather, but I think last month was kind of a quiet month. I didn't make it from Mall Dyer week. But I think last month was kind of a quiet month, I didn't make it from Mall Dyer weekend sadly, but, yeah, not too much.
Wearing dress up and anything?
No. Did you dress up as her? No. It was a quiet week, a quiet month, but looking forward to spring here and get a little warmer, so, yeah.
Hopefully.
Definitely. You've seen Nick in a snowman outfit, just. Don't go out there without.
I think those days are. That's it for me, though.
Thank you. And Christie, utilities?
Thank you, Mayor. I did write back in Meadows too, today, to check out the tower. I couldn't get all the way back there, so what I hear, it's moving forward. Saw lots of fire hydrants and stuff up, so that's always exciting, it's moving along. It looks really good in there, really. And then, again, just when I come, Mall Dyer weekend was great, we did the scavenger hunt, walked all around town, got tons of steps in, had a great time, it was nice. And looking very much forward to this, this is gonna be fun, the egg, the egg hunt, so. That's all I have.
Thank you. And Jay, Southern Maryland Municipal Association?
All right, Mayor, thank you, I have a very small report. May first and second, the Mayor of Municipal Board of Directors Retreat, again, is in Frederick, Maryland. I do not have an update on a SMMA meeting. Soon as I hear something, Terry, I'll tell you, but no update. And looking forward to the Maryland Municipal League, the June, or Summer Conference, June twenty-second through the twenty-fifth. That'll be here before you know it, so I think everyone has their hotel, and I think everybody's ready. So looking forward to it, it's a good educational session. Yep, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. And Mary, business development and retention?
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing I'm gonna tell all my small businesses is to contact your delegate. There are two laws that were proposed last week. The first one is a two-and-a-half percent sales tax between businesses, from business to business. So, you know, if I hire a plumber to come in, into my business to fix my plumbing, he would have to charge me two-and-a-half percent coming into a business. That is horrible for small business. Why would we do that? Why would we hurt small businesses? And then there's another one out there for advertising for nonprofit organizations, that's another two-and-a-half percent. So, you know, if, imagine if somebody puts up a banner, like a sign, you know, bookkeeping by Blanche over at the ball field, then the ball field is gonna have to pay two-and-a-half percent, which is where you're taking away from the Little League? Why, why are we doing that? So contact your delegates, tell them that you're not interested, that you do not like these bills, that would be a good thing. Remember our friend BOI that I've talked about, beneficial ownership information that I've brought up many times in here. If you guys remember the process, the procedures, or the past, I guess. Last year, BOI came out, all small businesses, including HOAs, were supposed to be registered with FinCEN, the Financial Crimes Enforcement Network. If you did not register by the end of the year, you were gonna have a five hundred dollar a day penalty. On December third, it was overturned, it was, injunction was put up against it from a judge in Texas that was overturned on December twenty-third. That was overturned again on December twenty-eighth. As of January, we had no BOI requirements. That has been overturned again on February twenty-seventh. So BOI is now required by March seventeenth, I believe, which is always random. Why don't you pick like a, a real date, like, I don't know, the end of the month? But then last week, they came out and said no penalty for not doing it. So this is where we are, following the journey of whether you have to be registered with the Financial Crimes Enforcement Net, Network, which is a division of the U.S. Treasury, with your business. For most of my clients, of course, I'm saying just do it, because I don't know when they're gonna overturn it again when something else is gonna happen, but I just want to keep you guys updated on the saga, the BOI saga, that is my life. And that's it, that's all I have. Oh, and my, and the picnic tables, yes. Yes, we had the scouts come down over the weekend and built five new picnic tables for the Wharf. And we had sponsors, I think, for every picnic table. Yeah, I saw that. So I think that, that's great, and you know, it was really cute, because the scoutmaster was down there, and I guess he was, he was, I don't know, observing or something, he was like, I'm really glad you're doing this, because I never have a place to sit when I come down here, so I can sit and review your scout project, and so, so it all worked out very well. So very, very pleased with that, I think that's a nice addition.
Yeah, it is.
I'm still waiting for a craft feast. Yeah, we should break them in, good.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else have anything for the good of the O.R.A.?
Terry, was that a trip for twenty-nine hours?
I do not. No, this, this is a trip in Valley Lee. It's, it's an all-female scout troop.
She said it, and I, because my kids are four-twenty, so I, I knew that it wasn't them.
Okay. Anything else? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.